Called a meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is our invocation. I'll enlight Reverend Elizabeth Askew, First Presbyterian Church, to come forward and give the invocation.
Great God of the universe, we come to you with deep gratitude. We are thankful for this world in which we live and for this community. We thank you for these leaders who serve with dignity, with humility, and with a sense of what is best for the greater good. We ask of God that you be with them, those who are continuing and those newly elected. We pray that you would give them your wisdom and a desire to serve us all. We are grateful for your care, for your presence, and for the hope we have as we live together as citizens of Albemarle. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Item number three, consider approval of the November 19 regular session minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Under Agenda Adjustments, I need to move items seven through 10 to come with the organizational meeting, and after number 13, we need to add an item to do an amendment to our audit contract.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now comes the time I'm going to give Mr. Dry a moment of personal privilege, but before I do, we're going to let you go last, Mr. Dry. Give all the council members a moment to say something if they so desire. And I'm going to take the opportunity to start and say, "Thank you for what you have brought to this council." When you came on nearly five years ago, we had a lot on our plate in the way of infrastructure, especially in water and sewer. And you've been a leader in helping us work through those, all the contracts that we've gone through. You've brought a sense of business to the discussion, and for that, we are very grateful. We think all that you have done, we will miss you, and believe me, we will still be in contact as we have projects moving forward. I want to thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you.
And I'll go around the table. Mr. Aldridge?
Just echo what the mayor said. Benton, you're a true gentleman, and this city is in a much better position right now because of Benton Dry and his service to this council and this entire community. I'm going to miss you, but as the mayor said, you're going to be involved, and we're going to rely on you and your expertise and just your good nature to help continue to steer us as we move forward. But thank you so much. You've been a true inspiration. I've learned a lot from you. I'm glad I had the opportunity to serve with you, but more importantly than that, I can call you my friend, and that means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hughes?
Benton, I would like to add on to, obviously, all the wonderful things that have been said so far. I do think you brought the sense to our council of looking at things as what does a small business owner look at in our community, and I think that was very, very important. You have given so much of your time behind the scenes that we all know, and do appreciate that. And as Bill said, I do look at you as a friend too, and it has been my honor to serve with you.
Thank you very much.
Benton, it'd probably scare you to death what I'm going to say about you, but it's all good. I concur with everything that everybody else has said thus far. Trust me when they say that you are a true leader. You've been a good council member. You brought a lot to the table. I've learned a lot from you, and hopefully you've learned a lot from us as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you for everything that you've done, but more importantly, I know that you've still got a lot to offer the city of Albemarle. In particular, your service and ideas and vision for the parks and recreation, and seeing the West Casket Ballpark come to fruition, we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, Benton. Mr. Treff?
Obviously, my role up here is a little bit different than everyone else's, but you and I have had this conversation. Benton, I really appreciate everything you've done. You're a business owner, and while this isn't my business, this belongs to the people. This is the way I try to treat it, so you provided good insight. We've had a lot of good conversation. I appreciate all your work ethic and support on everything we've done, and then personally, I appreciate all your support as we've worked together over the last five years and keep in touch. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael.
Skip over to me until the last beforehand, please.
Mr. Whitley?
I'll try to be brief. I've enjoyed serving with you, Benton. It's good to have someone on council when you have tough situations and you have questions that you know you're going to have some constructive and worthwhile input. I've served on a lot of different committees and boards, and served a long time in the military, and it's always good, and you can figure it out really quick, who's got your back, who you can count on. And it's great to have people that when they have input into an issue that you're working on, that you know you can put value in their opinion. So I appreciate serving with you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Bramlett?
In search of a pun, we appreciate what you've done to clean up this town.
It's been a pleasure.
Being the youngest member, latest member of this group, but the oldest one in age, I wouldn't have dreamed that I could learn so much from somebody so young, and I have done that, and thank you for playing that role for me.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. So Benton, you've served the city, given up your time and your talent, with energy and enthusiasm. You mentioned two weeks ago at the last meeting on November 19th, you went, and there were definitely not this many people here that night. There were probably six or eight, and each of them were just department heads. And as you went to each of those department heads one by one, you spoke to them individually and called them by name, knew what department, knew what their big issues were right now. You came in completely new to this whole process five years ago, but what a difference you have made. And the most valued thing that I have gleaned from it is that you have shown us and continue to show us that our employees are our greatest asset. So thank you, and if you treat your employees like that, I might have to come get a second job.
Mr. Dry?
Thank y'all. Very humbling, very humbling, and I appreciate everything. It has been a pleasure and a true honor to have had the opportunity to come in brand-new with so many of us back in 2013. We had a monumental task in front of us. I really didn't know what to expect until Whit Whitley asked me what my goals were for the city of Albemarle. That's a pretty hard question to, one, digest, but secondly, to come with something that makes sense and is true. And Ronnie and I were sitting there together, and I said, "If we can build a foundation strong and regardless of who comes in, that foundation is going to be there, then I will have accomplished what I set out to do, and when that happens, it's going to be my time to leave." And we have built a strong foundation for incoming councils, not just today, but from here on out, to look at what has happened and what can be done. We reached beyond our grasp. We didn't take things as a status quo. We challenged ourselves, we challenged each other to make this community a better place for you to live and for us to live, and more importantly, our children. That's where we have to make our investment. When you look around today on December the 3rd, 2018, much of what you see in Albemarle was not here. It just wasn't here. Not that we were special. What we were, we're committed to you. We couldn't sit back and look and say, "This is the way it's been. This is the way it has always been." The way we looked at it was, "What can we do to make it better?" And each one of these folks up here are absolutely the best people to work with. I spent 18 years in the corporate world, the last 10 in corporate headquarters. I've never worked with this many people who shared the same goal and how we were going to get there, and it was very simple. We work together. We remain totally transparent in what we do and how we do it. And when we tell you we're going to do something, by God, we're going to do it.
Amen.
And we did it. And the challenge is now to keep it going. And when I look around at my compadres here, I know we're in good hands. Councilperson-elect Shirley Lauter will be sitting here momentarily, and I hope that... And Shirley, the best advice I can give you is what Whit Whitley gave me five years ago, and that is to listen, ask questions, and learn. And that has served me well throughout my entire life. I've worked for 48 years, and I don't know anything other than to work and to do something that's going to benefit anybody and everybody. I'm not perfect. There's been a lot of neat things set up here, and I really appreciate them, but I can be a pain in the butt. If you don't want to know something, don't ask me, because I'll tell you. But it really has been a joy, and I look forward to seeing greater things happen. I look forward to the businesses. And I wish I could sit here and tell you everything that may happen that takes place back there, but we can't do it. You've got to be surprised at some point in time. But thank you, guys, so much. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't thank my wife for her support. But more importantly, for putting up with me. There's a lot of things that I'm involved with, and she says, "It's time to slow down. It's time to enjoy life," and that is true. Unfortunately, I've got a will that doesn't allow me to always put on brakes to do that. So sweetheart, I love you, and I thank you for you, and I thank you for all your support. The ball's still in play, so we'll continue to move it forward. One person I would like to recognize, because in every organization, there's one person who holds everything together. They're the glue. Everything that they do makes what we do run very smoothly, and that's Paulette Bowers.
She just worked.
Without her, a lot of what we see and what she does behind the scenes is fantastic. I've enjoyed working with you. You have been a great teacher to me. I know there were a lot of times I'd walk in and nobody'd be around and just ask questions. And thank you so much, and I will always remember the good things and even some of the bad things we had to do. But one of the things I do want to tell you, you're going to be able to add some money to the budget, because there's not going to be anybody else around to eat all the cookies. Thank y'all very much. God bless you. I wish you a very merry Christmas. I wish you a happy new year and a safe and happy 2019. God bless you.
Benton, you're going to be a tough act to follow. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until our organizational meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My friend, thank you for joining. It's been a pleasure.
As Chris will tell you, I'm a Democrat, but how do I thank?
Republican.
Thank you, sweetie. It's been a pleasure.
Mayor? Michael?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You did scare me, too, man. Enjoy it. It's been a pleasure.
So Ronnie?
As I told last time, probably the best thing about tonight is I won't have to mess with the computer.
I wasn't going to say that. I wasn't going to say that.
You are now an expert at texting, right?
That's right.
I'm getting there. I don't know about expert. Let's just say he texts. Don't say expert.
He's getting there.
We will now move into our swearing-in ceremony. With us tonight is our chief resident, our senior resident, Superior Court Judge Kevin Bridges, who will be doing our swearing-in. If you will come forward, Judge, we will start with Martha Hughes.
Thank you very much. I want to take just a moment to thank each and every one of you for what you do and what you have done, for giving them the time and your energy sacrificially in the benefit of citizens of Albemarle. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I also would like to say that it is my privilege and honor to administer the oath of office to be following folks who were successful in this past election, Shirley Lauter, Martha Hughes, and Chris Whitley. We're starting the pen. If you have a special... If you would press your left hand on the right and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Martha Hughes.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As city council member.
As city council member.
So help me God. Congratulations.
All right. Next, Chris Whitley?
If you would press your left hand on the right and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Christopher Whitley.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office. As city council member. So help me God. Congratulations.
Lift him.
Shirley Lauter, if you'll come forward, we'll swear in our newest member.
I've got to give up.
Congratulations. Aye, please say your name.
Aye, Shirley Lauter.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As city council member.
As city council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Where are we? Right here? You moved. Thank you all for inviting me.
Shirley, if you'll take your receipt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. We appreciate it very much.
Mr. Shirley. This might have been a chair you were filling there.
I just hope when I leave that you all will have these same words. Keep it up. Keep it recording. And just put my name in there. I don't know how I would be so honored. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion that we go back into regular session. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, I want to give each of you a chance, personal privilege, to say what you would like, and I'll start with you, Ms. Lauter.
Oh, goodness. I know this guy. I've known him all my life, and he is just what you said about him. Even in our campaigning, he was still the gentleman that I knew had done right, and I appreciate that. I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Ms. Hughes?
I'm honored to be elected again to serve another four years. It has been a huge learning curve experience these first four years, and so it has been my honor to serve with everyone, and I look forward to the coming years and the large projects we've got laying ahead. So thank you for all your support and vote.
Thank you. Mr. Whitley?
I think after an election that goes on for months and months, and all the commercials and advertisements, people don't want to hear a whole lot of talking like that, so I'll just be real brief. I was very humbled during the election. The number of people that supported me, voted for me, allowed me, and requested me, put signs out, so unless you run for office, it really, it's just basically humbling. It makes you want to do a good job, because you don't want to let those people down. So like Martha, I'm excited about the things that we've got going on, and it's just the beginning, I think. A lot of stuff is happening. A lot of the things we've worked on, and I'll be real brief, a lot of the things we've worked on for the past four or five years are just now coming about. They're just now getting kicked off, and there's other things coming down the pipe. So the next several years are going to be pretty exciting, I think, but it's going to be a lot of hard work. But I'm excited to get started on another term, and I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you to each one of you, and we look forward, Ms. Lauter, especially to you joining. I think you'll have to hit the ground running, and you'll learn a lot in a hurry, I think. Moving to number seven, consider appointment of the city manager.
Do you want to go ahead? Your Honor, I move we appoint Michael Ferris as our city manager.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to appoint Michael Ferris, city manager. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, be it ordered.
Make the motion that we appoint Martha Sue Hall as mayor pro tem.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to appoint Martha Sue Hall as mayor pro tem.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consider appointment of the city attorney.
Make a motion that we appoint David Beaver as our city attorney.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to appoint David Beaver as city attorney. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, it is normal that, and this is counsel's prerogative, that we let the city manager make the appointments for finance director, city clerk, deputy city clerk, and tax collector. If counsel wishes to do that, his intention is to appoint Colleen Conroy, finance director, city clerk, Paulette Bowers, deputy city clerk, Nikki Hardy, and tax collector, Richard Lanziati.
Your Honor, I move that we continue to allow the city's ordinance to be in effect for these appointments. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, be it ordered.
Make the motion that we appoint Martha Sue Hall as mayor pro tem.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to appoint Martha Sue Hall as mayor pro tem.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consider appointment of the city attorney.
Make a motion that we appoint David Beaver as our city attorney.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to appoint David Beaver as city attorney. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, it is normal that, and this is counsel's prerogative, that we let the city manager make the appointments for finance director, city clerk, deputy city clerk, and tax collector. If counsel wishes to do that, his intention is to appoint Colleen Conroy, finance director, city clerk, Paulette Bowers, deputy city clerk, Nikki Hardy, and tax collector, Richard Lanziati.
Your Honor, I move that we continue to allow the city's ordinance to be in effect for these appointments. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Also, we typically have another deputy city clerk, and Michael Ferris has served that in the absence of other city clerks. I would need a motion for that if that is counsel's intent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Have one other thing to come under the organizational meetings. Tucker Osborne is representing Richard Hudson's office, has a presentation to make.
Thank you, Mayor Michael, and council members for allowing me this time, and I will be brief. I'm here tonight. The congressman had actually planned on coming. He had business in DC, wasn't able to make it, but I did want to share just a few things on his behalf. I'd like to thank all of the city council members for their hard work and dedication to the city of Albemarle. In particular, I'd like to congratulate our newest council member, the honorable Shirley Lauter, and it's my honor tonight to present you with a letter from Congressman Richard Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
In particular, I'd like to congratulate our newest council member, the Honorable Shirley Lauter. And it's my honor tonight to present you with a letter from Congressman Richard Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Counsel, that completes our organizational meeting. We're going to stand in recess for about five minutes and give the council opportunity to greet people in the audience. Call the meeting back to order. Item number five, announced allegations, Ms. Ellen Lambert to speak with counsel concerning the opioid crisis.
Good evening, counsel. How are you all?
All right.
Great. Thank you for having me. I know that this is a touchy subject. There are a lot of people who are probably lashing out, blaming city council members for things that are happening in the community. This is not what this is about. I would like to ask that today that we agree that there is such a problem, that opioids are ravishing our city. And that we could at least resolve to do something about this, working with county leaders, state leaders, perhaps community liaison programs, to see what we can do about housing. And I am offering my assistance in whatever way I can to be a bridge between police and citizens, and between citizens and community leaders. And I'm offering my help and asking that you resolve to begin to heal some of these people, if you would be so kind.
Any particulars, or you're just asking for our general support?
Our general support? There's no solution. This is not going to happen overnight, but it's going to take a lot of us collaborating together to even begin to put a dent in it. And just as long as we acknowledge that there is an issue and that we need to do something about it, that's all I'm asking.
I don't think there's any question that there's an issue. And there was a couple of meetings last week that we were in attendance to, and there's at least one or two more this week. There are several groups trying to come together to come up with a way to address this. One of the things I did hear from some of the meetings last week is, we need detox, but we need detox not here. We need to be able to take the people somewhere else to help them recover and be in a detox center where they're not near the friends that maybe some of them had caused some of those problems. So that's one of the issues that we're talking through with some of these other committees. And hopefully, we will, I don't know if you're familiar, Monarch is working on it. They have got a new grant. The Health Department has got a new grant program that they're working on. And hopefully, the legislature has made that a priority, we hope, to also do something on their end. We've got to have money and resources to make this happen.
I'll be more than happy to do what I can to help write grants.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else further?
No, I just want, at this time, so that I can publicly relay to people that are in the community that you are concerned. And I appreciate you doing this publicly so that some of the families can feel a little more support.
Thank you very much. Unannounced allegations, John Welch to talk about the Reefs Across America program.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this late opportunity, not just for being not on the agenda, but also because of the time of month. And first, Ms. Lauter, congratulations. My name is John Welsh. I'm the current commander of American Legion Post 520 here in Albemarle. For the past five years, we have sponsored Reefs Across America, which is held annually at Liberty Gardens. What the program is for those that are not up to date with it, so to speak. This program started in 1995 out of Massachusetts to honor the veterans. Well, it's finally gotten down to us about five years ago when we started it. What we do is try to collect funds to place as many wreaths as possible on our veterans' graves. Between Stanley Gardens, Fairview, and Albemarle City Cemetery on PD, we have over 2,100 veterans interred here. We do not come close to even 10% of those people being honored with a wreath at Christmas time. We do have the ceremony, like I said, at Liberty Gardens. What we do down there is we have seven wreaths normally. Last year, I added an eighth one. We present a wreath for the Army, the Navy, the Marine Corps, the Air Force, the Coast Guard, Merchant Marines, POWs, MIA's, of which there are over 40,000 still missing. And two years ago, I added the gold star because I felt we need to honor the mothers who have lost sons. And now they're losing daughters as well. This program, our ceremony, will be held on December 15th. That's just two weeks away. That's why I apologize for being late. I personally want to invite you to attend. Some places will have an agenda rescheduled if the weather's bad. Ladies and gentlemen, we do not do that. If the weather's bad, our military personnel don't call it quits. We're not going to either. So if you plan on attending and the weather's bad, whether it's snowing, freezing, or raining, dress appropriately. They do it for us. We're doing it for them.
What time, John, on the 15th?
What time? 11 o'clock in the morning at Liberty Gardens, December 15th.
If anyone wanted to make a donation, should the donation be made online, or should we get it to you?
Online.
Online?
Online, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Are you doing the wreaths at the cemeteries?
Right now, the wreaths are delivered to my house. After the ceremony, I take them up and lay the wreaths just randomly on veterans' graves.
And how many will you do here?
Uh, last count, I think I have about 50 wreaths, and that's it. See, they've got two programs. One, you can actually, the wreaths cost $15 apiece. One way, the organization, in this case, our Legion Post, wouldn't get $5 back. We opted, we do the two for three. So for every two wreaths that are purchased, we actually get a third wreath instead of the money back, just because it goes further. And that's the purpose.
So if we go online and do this, can we ask that they be sent here, that the wreaths be sent to here? Is that how we make sure we get them?
If you go online, there's a way you can get to it. You'll have to look up the location.
Okay.
And it'll bring up Stanley County.
Okay.
And you should see, I believe it's Stanley Gardens, North Carolina.
That's, if we just find Stanley County on there?
Yes.
Okay.
SGMNC, it should be.
But you can go on their website and find the location, make a contribution, and also sign up, because I think a lot of locations you could sign up to go to lay wreaths.
Yes.
Is that, okay.
The only thing we will not do is specific graves.
Gotcha.
Right.
So if you had somebody you wanted specifically for that wreath to be placed on, you can order that wreath. You can do it yourself. But we don't have the personnel to go out and hunt them and try to find them.
How many people do you usually have helping? Or is it?
Myself, my wife, sometimes one or two others.
Legion Post?
As soon as this is over is when you'll go do it, right? As soon as?
Soon as the ceremony is over, which generally lasts about 30 to 45 minutes, depending on the speakers we have. Two years ago, I think we had two speakers. Mr. Mayor has generally been there, and I appreciate that.
John, thank you very much, and we will see you then.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Number six, municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move down to number 11, ordinance 1839, a budget amendment for the police department to purchase patrol rifles. This is money that has come out of the drug revenue that they get for asset forfeiture and drug sale, substance tax.
Move approval, ordinance 1839.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, consider approval of the abstract of votes for the November 6, 2018 municipal general election. They are in your agenda if you have any questions.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Richfield also goes on that list, I believe.
We are only approving the Albemarle part. They did send us a lot of other cities.
Lot of the other.
The Albemarle part is what we're approving. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 13, a reminder, your employee Christmas luncheon will be Wednesday, December 12th, at the Waddell Center. Counsel typically serves if you so desire. It's totally up to you, but I encourage you to come and eat and be with the employees during that time. I think we start at 11 o'clock? 11:30. Counsel, we added an amendment, and that is an amendment to our audit contract. This has to be amended and extended because of your, remember I told you, the actuarial study was slow coming in this year? And we're having to get it together before they can finish the audit. So I need to amend the audit to the end of the year.
So moved. Do you want a date specific till December 31st?
That's fine.
December 31st.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
The parade.
Yep, yeah, the parade, or we're going to?
I'm glad you mentioned that. The parade is this coming Saturday. You need to be there about 10:15. It starts at 10:30. You need to be about 10:15 to have time to get on the vehicle.
Same location.
It's there in front of First Citizens Bank.
Okay. Ross, are you putting us on the back of a dump truck again? Well, we've tried to talk the mayor into riding with us versus segregating himself and riding in a different vehicle. We think that he needs to be there amongst the people, just like we are.
I am.
In the back of a dump truck. No, I think you need to be in the back of that truck with us.
Mr. Ferris, you have anything?
Just a real quick comment about leafs, loose leaf collection season. That's a pretty big and valuable and expensive service we provide, and it's a pretty fluid situation. So hopefully, nothing has changed from when I last checked, but as of last check, waste management was on schedule. As a matter of fact, they had a little extra employee overtime that they were allowed to use, and they utilized it this past weekend trying to get ahead. So then when they get, they were caught up, but when they get into some of the heavier zones, they get the heavier time of leaf season, which we're in right now, it would lighten the load for when they came on schedule. So those areas they did run ahead in, they will also serve us on schedule, but they've done a good job so far. This is the, from now till they cycle the city, is probably the peak collection time. As mentioned, it's a great service. They've got a new supervisor over the routes this year. And Public Works Director Ross Holshouser and I have met and talked with him several times, and he seems to be doing a real good job and understand what it takes to get the job done. And I just want to provide that update that so far, so good. It does, at times, the volume gets where it's not physically able for them to maybe stay on schedule, but they've got some built-in days where they can catch back up. So, so far, so good.
Okay.
And that's it.
Also mention the ADDC Tour of Homes. The holiday tour of homes is this Sunday afternoon, 2 to 6. I would encourage you to buy a ticket. You can buy them at the ADDC office here in City Hall. And it costs you $12. On the day of the event, it's $15. That's a fundraiser that allows the ADDC to assist in buying flowers and all for the planters downtown. So I'd encourage you to come out and tour the homes and see the Christmas decorations. One of the stops this year will be the Central School Auditorium Department, uh, Central School Auditorium. Mr. Townsend?
I just want to take this opportunity to personally thank newest council member, Ms. Shirley Lauter. Welcome aboard. Trust me, as Benton, Mr. Dry said earlier, he was true to his words when he said, listen, learn, and ask questions, you know? That's, I think that's how all of us have learned, and we still learning. We still learning to this day. I've been on council since 2009. I can tell you one good thing about this current council and past councils since I've been on council. I can't recall not one situation, not one issue that's been on any agenda or anything where, coming on board, where I could say that we voted on issues based on like a political party or anything of that nature. One good thing about the Albemarle City Council that we tend to vote on everything based on issues and facts, and I think that's one thing, how we all get along so well, you know? But I'm sure that we'll continue to move the city of Albemarle forward with just leadership of your service. Welcome aboard.
Ms. Hughes?
I too would like to welcome Councilmember Lauter. As I mentioned to her when we were talking out there, as Dexter said, you have to listen and listen and listen because there's a lot to absorb. And you feel like a deer in headlights, but you'll get there. Do we have any update we can provide on FIFER? I mean, I know we know.
I will tell you, the groundbreaking has changed to January the 17th.
Okay.
And they don't have an exact time yet. They had to change that due to the waiting on some approvals for USDA.
Okay. I just think it's good for the public to hear, so thank you for the update. That's all.
All right. Ms. Lauter would like to welcome you to the council, and I know you can do a great job. And also, congratulations to Mr. Whitley and Ms. Hughes for your continuous service on our city council. And Dexter Townsend, or Councilmember Townsend alluded to something a minute ago, and I kind of just want to touch on it too. I think one of the things of being on this council for going on five years now, one of the things that I've learned is the fact that we're all in this thing together. And we all tend to have the same common goal. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I don't even know where the comment was made, but somebody said that when they watched one of our city council meetings, they couldn't tell the Democrats from the Republicans. And I thought, what a cool concept, you know? Isn't that the way it should be? You've got seven people sitting up here that are looking at all the facts, that are researching the information, and making the best possible decisions to move our city forward. So to Councilmember Townsend's point, we have to continue moving our city forward and making sure that it's the best, making sure we make the best decisions for everyone. And as long as we stay true to that, you're going to see this city and this community tend to grow and expand, and future development's going to happen. But I think it's bigger than any one party. It's bigger than any one person. And I'm super excited about what our future holds together as we move forward. We do have a lot of things that we can't publicly talk about that are going to happen, and I'm just, I'm tickled to death with it, and I can't wait to see everything that happens in the near future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Really don't have anything tonight to folks dismay. Don't you, but welcome Shirley. I mean, listen, I can still call her Shirley because I first started working with her, I believe it was in 1983, actually.
Shirley, it wasn't that long.
I think it was Shirley. I think it was 1983. So welcome aboard. I'm still learning, and I just realized when I had to write down how many years, Dexter, I've been on here, honey, what acknowledge it, and I'm still asking questions.
Mr. Whitley?
We're still learning because the rules keep changing. That's the problem. Shirley, welcome. We're forward to working with you. I was going to check my list and see if anything has not been taken already. Couple reminders, you probably got a couple of days ago, the League of Municipalities' regular newsletter. In there are the goals that they have, legislative goals for the next two years. Ronnie, Marcy, and I, and Michael and Nikki went up last week to help set those or vote on them. And I think some of ours made it in, but not all of them. But anyway, they're in there. It's 15 goals that the league is going to work on, on behalf of the municipalities for the next two years. So go in and take a look at those. If you're going to through Monroe anytime soon, I went to the ribbon cutting last week for the Monroe bypass. It's open.
Yes, it is.
And I drove about half of it after it opened. It's really, it's really nice. It's a toll road. So if you don't have one of those EZ Pass or things, just drive through, and they'll send you a bill in the mail.
Sure will. And it will be much more expensive.
Picture of your tag and send you the bill in the mail. Uh, I think that's it. Everything else is taken.
Mr. Ramon?
Many years ago, my wife was director of Programs for Exceptional Children in the Stanley County Schools. I can remember many, many times she would come home and talk about this person with whom she worked, a Shirley Lauter. And how much she talked about Shirley and Shirley's commitment to the children of this county. Shirley, I remember very specifically one time she said, you took her to a home that the rooms were so small. That the rooms were so small that the living room, I believe, was completely covered by a mattress. The floor was completely covered by a mattress. And that kind of living conditions that some of our people lived in. And she kept over and over again talking about how Shirley was so committed to helping the children of this county. I know that Shirley's going to have that same sense of commitment to the people of Albemarle, and I look forward to working with her. Welcome, Shirley.
Thank you.
Shirley, that brings us to you.
Well, I think I said it, when I swear, so help me God, I will do my best.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the audience have anything to come for counsel? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until our next regular scheduled meeting on December the 17th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion?
I would like to remind Shirley that don't expect this short lead is...
They're ruining her tonight.
No, this is not.
This is highly unusual.
I just, in my comments, I meant to say, as customary with the Albemarle Christmas Parade, it's either going to be raining or snowing, so dress warm.
It might be both.
Do not forget your hat.
I think the last five years...
That's right. Everybody's got a hat, and then Martha said, "I'll give you one, Shirley."
The last four or five years, it's rained, it's not last year.
All in favor say aye.